This meeting will come to order. The roll call would show that everyone is present. And we could do the pledge of allegiance right now. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, and free of sin. Okay, we're trying a technical experiment here. In an effort to eliminate feedback. I'm going with a headset. Dr. Willie's in attendance from his office. I'm the only one in the boardroom. And there's some functions going on in the lobby. I don't know if you're going to be able to hear that or not. But we'll stumble through it. Approval of the agenda. There's only one addition to the agenda. The E2 under Erin Tufti's presentation about a small business relief program. And her part of the agenda, we discussing that. Should have had an email copy of that. So is there, with that addition, is there an approval for the agenda?
Sommo.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll go by order of district. All those in favor say aye, District 1.
Aye.
2.
Aye.
3.
Aye.
4 is aye. 5?
Aye.
All right. Under the consent agenda, does anybody have any items they want, Pope? And if not, is there approval of the consent agenda?
Sommo.
Is there a second? All right. All those in favor say aye, District 1.
Aye.
District 2? 2. 2. Joe, turn your stuff on. Okay. District 3?
Aye.
4, aye. 5?
Aye.
All right. Okay, recess the regular meeting. And we'll go with the Human Services Board items. The, any, any questions about claims paid? If not, we can, that's for informations only. We can move on to the Human Services Board regular items. Melissa, you want to?
Good morning.
Hi, Melissa.
Hi there. Good morning, Mr. Chair, Members of the Board. I'm Melissa Gubried, the Human Services Administrator. And we have one agenda item on the Human Services. And that's like on D1 on page 40. And the purpose is to request approval to apply for CARES Act funding. And we are requesting approval to apply for sufficient funds to cover two full-time social workers. That would be added to the Community Action Team to focus on outreach and support to people experiencing homelessness. And with me today is Julie Ellis, I hope somewhere. I'm Director of Community Support to present information about how the funding could benefit our community. And we have a brief PowerPoint if you want to pull that up. On slide number 2 of our PowerPoint. PowerPoint up. If not, I will work through it with all the methods that you guys seeing the PowerPoint. But by way of background, you probably are aware of the United States Congress. Where we're a group of economic securities. We have a lot of 82 billion in spending. It's just, it's just a bit of a thing. And so, I mean, I'm, I mean, I was born and that was the increase of the emergency. Program and we're possibly in urban development. And so, we propose to keep to a full, 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 full time. That they will have an engagement in people with the community cooperation. Um, all of the community that are in, in this group. And so, I'll, I'll, Julie, I hope that this is for me. Um, this is, um, this is.
I don't know if I can see you. You hear me?
I can't see you.
Here. What my, my is the point. Do you want, do you want to pull up the PowerPoint?
I better just go over it.
Okay. I apologize if you not see. The point in time count is the thing that I want here. I just wanted to, um, problem. Um, we did, we did, we did, nicely. I'm gonna, I'm gonna. This is the day in January, we're, we try to count as the whole people as well. Any members participating. Not the best of the world because of people who are homeless. Well, it's not very cool for the community shelter. Um, to period data in January of 2016. Had 166 individuals counted. And in January of 2019, there were 163 individuals counted. What that says is that we continue to expand from people who are homeless in our community. And all of which, a lot of work is, um, um, usually an issue that we work on. We do, um, we call them, um, the, and for homeless and above. That is, uh, three social workers. One is acting since that was.
It's upsetting for us. I can't understand anything.
I can't understand a little bit.
And I'm gonna shut the door to the boardroom because it sounds like a inhale. Okay, I'm done.
Please, there are a way for you to, our, for us to help us or something else. And then what you're going to do is come through the, I think, um, you understand what you want to do.
It's a big, can I hear you, can I hear every other?
Well, if you can hear, probably. Dr. Willie, are you getting?
I'm getting from the control.
Yeah.
Willie, careful, Miss Pope. He needs to have maybe 40 bit power.
You might be able to hear me.
Uh, we're tougher than we look. There we go.
So Julie, are you still there?
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Can you just go audio only because it make it easier to understand? Can I, can you, that, Commissioner Clark? I'm sorry, can you turn off your video?
Our downtown.
That'll help. Not helping. I don't know. Can you hear any better stuff? I feel you're really strong echo.
So Julie, do you want to just run to my office quick?
Sure.
Maybe Julie a minute to get to our office and to my office and hear both. So while we're waiting for Julie, we can talk a little bit about the background. What we're asking for ultimately is to apply for the CARES Act funding that's specifically for this purpose. And what we're hoping is to add two fully funded social work positions to the Community Action Team. That would work with the collaborative efforts with Centur Care, um, the Public Safety Club, Police Department, the Sheriff's Office. You know, and other providers, Dr. Lee at Central Mental Health Center. We're all working together to try to focus on helping people who are experiencing homelessness in our community. So the next slide, if you want to pull it ahead, you can take a look at the numbers that Julie was referencing just a minute ago. This is the point in time count that she mentioned is not a very good system. Because it's just one day out of the year in January where they literally want us to go around and count the number of people who are living in the community who are experiencing homelessness, which of course has its challenges. Since many people, quote, couch top from place to place. And so it's, and people might not be around when you actually do a head count. So this is grossly underestimating the number of people who are experiencing homelessness in our community. Nevertheless, we've had a fairly consistent count in the last couple of years. And while we've been doing a lot of work in this area, we still have, have a concern with people who are experiencing homelessness. So if you move to the next.
Melissa, a question on those figures which could be distorted as well. Does that include Salvation Army? Because you know, that's outside the county, but obviously involves a lot of people that interact in Stearns County.
Yes, it does, it includes all the people in our community, no matter which county they're living in. But they try to count the numbers by county. And so it is not a perfect system by any means. So, and if you could hold just one second, Julie says she's locked out. Hold on.
Ah, technology, isn't it wonderful?
When it's accessible, it works.
It's great. I found Julie Ellis.
Send her back, send her back. Send her back.
I don't know if you can see her now. And I hope she doesn't have COVID.
One other thing. I'm just hoping for a good attitude. I'm just hoping for a good attitude.
Have at any time. All right, so I was just repeating, Commissioner Persky asked whether those numbers consider Salvation Army numbers. And they go by county numbers, so the point is what we were referencing.
Yes, it's the community of St. Cloud.
Yes. Okay, so now we're on the home team and that's where I think you left off.
Yes, yes. So our home team is comprised of three social workers. And one of those workers is a housing specialist. She just looks for housing that's appropriate for the individual. She does a wonderful job, we've found, housing for people that have been very difficult to house. The other two social workers are outreach workers. So they're out working with people either in the shelter or who are on the street, not having a place to live. And they try to engage. Sometimes it takes a little while to build the trust with those individuals. Because it is kind of a different way of life. So we do a lot of outreach and engage with a lot of different people. I think since COVID, we have housed over 50 people that are homeless. So this is a pretty tremendous team. What we'd like to do is expand that outreach and add two outreach workers. Yeah, go ahead. And it looks like Commissioner Lenzmeyer had a question.
Commissioner Natch asked us, St. Cloud also participate with staff.
Well, are these brand new positions? Are they internal transfers? Are they, uh, how do you want to handle this?
Positions would be hired into it and it's for a two-year duration. And if after two years, we determine that it's either not worthwhile or doesn't make economic sense, we would then reduce the number of staff by attrition. So if, actually, we'll go through the savings that we've had so far with just the numbers we have. If you want to hit the next slide. This is data you've seen before, but I'll have Julie review the facts here.
So this is the work of the Community Action Team and you have heard about them before. And this is our collaboration with our partners in the community, including Centur Care, the Mental Health Center, St. Cloud PD. So what we have been doing is working with those folks that are using the kind of high-end services on a more regular basis. And this is just a snapshot of what we have been seeing. If you look at, well, if you look at what is happening in our jail, over 40% of the people in the jail do medication for. That's pretty significant. That kind of stood out to us as well as the number of people who are homeless that are in our jail or that are utilizing high-end services. So those people that are in the emergency room a lot, that are in the detox beds a lot. Most of them really have no place to live. So when we started this work, we said, well, what if we just house them? That might take care of a lot of the problem. And it did. That really is the first start to attending to some of those other needs.
And the next slide.
So this slide you've probably seen too. One of the tricky things with the work of the action team is, is to capture what the savings are as well as the improved quality of life for the individuals that we're serving. So these are actually five people, I think they were the first five people that the action team served. And what we've been doing is collecting data on what the cost was. What it was 12 months after. Measure the days in detox, the day in jail, the contacts that they had. As well as the. Look at. By, you, doesn't. They had a lot. If that's. But that's our draft. Person number one, we're still working on a little bit. And we really like to leave person number one in there because it's, it really shows us that this isn't 100%, but it's, it's very high. We have a very high success rate. But some people we need to look, work with a little bit longer than 12 months. So it's not magic, but we're seeing some really good results.
And on the next slide, what we've been seeing with this collaboration is substantial savings in the system as well as to the Stearns County Human Services budget in the form of reduced commitments and reduced detox payments. We've also seen savings almost across the board with law enforcement encounters and emergency room visits. And with Stearns County jail days, sometimes those jail days go up because we have also correction agents working with us. And it's a one tool in the toolbox we use to try to help people stay motivated, to follow a good, healthy path for themselves. But overall, we've seen a lot of system savings with it. And so what I meant before by we would add, we would add two new FTEs. What, what we do is we watch the data very closely in the system and try to calculate that into savings. And so far, having the home team as well as the correction agents and the other collaborative partners at the table has resulted in overall savings to us as a county as well as the system. And so we'll be watching that over the next two years if approved to apply for the funds. And then if we receive the funds, we'll be watching that to see what kind of effect that has. And this is focusing in on the financial aspects. But number one, we've been very pleased with the way in which we've been serving people.
Melissa, do you have the cum totals on that comparison? You had those individuals up there before. Do you have like total number of visits, total number of individuals?
Uh, that we've served in total.
Between 2017 and 2018, you had the individuals and you posted their number of visits on one side and then the following year. But did you, how about the whole cum totals?
For the five individuals?
No, for the, for the placements, for the number of visits in jail, number of visits at detox, number of visits. So we, we see if there's a trend as far as the number of visits as well.
Yeah, we do have the data collectively for each of those years. I unfortunately don't have it in front of me today, but I can certainly get it back to you. 2019 data, I see there's a question about that as well. Why, it's kind of tricky is 12 months have to actually pass. And then we have to go back to these entities to see what the utilization was of those services. It's a fairly complex process because we have to release a sign for each of those places as well. Most people are pretty cooperative with us and they do sign the releases. But if they do not, like the St. Cloud PD information, that's public information, you can get that. But we have data people who just crunched that data. I know we're in, obviously. Should have the 2019. But it's 12 months after we've engaged with them. So that would actually be the 2018 interventions. Does that make sense? So we've actually been doing this work for about three years. And we have one set of data that shows, you know, 2018 served clients. And 2019 will be available 12 months after those interventions have happened. So it takes a while for it to catch up.
This is aggregate data. Is it possible from the aggregate data to, without identifying specific individuals? My point is, is that I'm thinking that it's a limited number of people that are accessing these various encounters numerous times. Is there any way we can get data like that? You're showing us here is a total. Much smaller number of people that are generating these totals. Julie, is that possible?
Yeah. All right, that is very possible and that is definitely our plan. We just don't. That Melissa, I talked about is, about is. That's what we're doing, right? So it's hard to find a way to. One of the strong indicators that we have is that to our budget. And detox. And I, I've been in my position for four years and I remember how frightened I was about my budget. We were adding a half a million dollars. And I knew I had to get that under control. We have not increased that budget since we began this work. And our expenditures are actually down pretty significantly. We still simply commit people. There's no doubt that's definitely still needed, but we're getting to people quicker. And that's kind of where this work is going and where we'd like to take it now is this team has gotten pretty good about seeing, oh, I see where this is going to go. You know, so they meet an individual, they worked with somebody like this before and it had a pretty poor ending. So they're intervening earlier and we're getting to people quicker and we're avoiding that commitment. So again, it's hard to measure, although if you look at the outcome, which is our budget, that's a great, great.
So I'm wondering, I think part of what I'm hearing is the, you know, more information by individuals like you gave us for numbers one to five, those, those first ones, which I think would be helpful. Recal correctly, for those of you who may not remember, I'm serving as the AMC representative to the State Competency Restoration Task Force. And part of the reason why statewide we're involved is because of this absolutely huge cost shift to us. I know that these efforts started for positive preventative as well as budget costs. But the amount that you might recall we've been seeing in our budgets going up with regard to commitments has been frankly shocking. And then thinking about what it means for the people. This particular model is now being held up really as a potential opportunity for many other counties or statewide to look at because of the positive outcomes we're seeing so far. And if I recall correctly, you all put together what on average we're saving, the system, broader system saving about $34,000 a year with the people who, Lee, you were talking about. And I know there's a hope to get to that next level down. When you presented at our Rotary, I know we had a lot of business owners asking about, so what about some of the other people that might not rise to this occasion? You know, is there an opportunity there? And then lastly, can you just talk about how many people who have been homeless and been permanently placed in permanent housing? Because that's a pretty exciting outcome too.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark. So since the beginning of this pandemic, we have housed approximately. Started the year, I think we're closer to 100. Sometimes people stay in placement, sometimes we need to work with them again because things fall through. So we count the numbers as duplicated. So of that 100, you know, it might not be 100 new people. But surprisingly, not that many people actually lose their housing. Try to stay in touch and stay engaged for quite some time to be sure that people don't re-enter the same system that they were kind of caught up in. As far as getting some numbers to the board, I, you know, I can certainly try to get more aggregate numbers so you can see in the totality of what the savings have been to this, these different entities. If that would be helpful, I certainly can do that. Do I address all your questions?
I don't know to what extent you can pull this. Whatever bug that Jeff Mergan was experiencing is now transferred itself into my machine. But the function line is, is how many individuals interface with law enforcement, emergency room, detox, in jail? I mean, is there, we, there are people that are having, that are at multiple points, shall we say? I'm thinking that a relatively small number of people generate quite a few of these statistics. And I still, I suspect somewhere in the presentation, Julie, you probably told. And I still, I suspect somewhere in the presentation, Julie, you probably told us whether or not you can isolate who those folks are, but it probably didn't prove. So the only suggestion I would have is if you can do that now, right? And if you can't do that now, we should think analysis, analysis is valuable.
Lenzmer, we could certainly get the number that have been served by the action team. As far as the duplication, the way the action team works is somebody in the action team will identify a high utilizer. They come together and meet and usually more than one person on the action team has had encounters with that person. Sometimes it will happen that it's only been law enforcement, but very rarely because law enforcement is usually taking them somewhere, either to the jail or to the emergency room or to detox. So there's usually one or two partners who are kind of familiar with the person and they agree to take the lead and reach out to that person and ask the question, basically, what is it that you need? Like somebody that goes to detox 20 times, 20 days out of 30, there's an unmet need there. So they sit down and have that conversation with them. And oftentimes it's something like housing or it's a social. It's kind of surprising how many people that, you know, that are in detox a lot really have no connections anymore to any family or friends or any social network that they had in the past. So if we can identify the need and then fill it, this just kind of goes away. They don't access those services anymore. And so it's a really interesting approach to this work because what we've been doing in the past is we had a boxed in set of services that we offered to people depending on where we work, right? The emergency room offered their set of services, the detox offered their set of services, but it really wasn't what the individual needed. So the action team members just ask that simple question and it gets them to the root of the problem almost all of the time. Sometimes it takes a little more discussion than others, but we can usually figure out what the person actually needs. But the numbers, as far as the, since we started this work, I don't have that before me today, I apologize, but I'd be happy to get that to you.
I don't think, I don't know that apology is necessary. Just sometimes you don't know going into a data set what the appropriate questions are. I mean, just looking at this graph that's up on the screen now, obviously, the entry point for a lot of this, law enforcement, right off the bat, there's a good chance if they went to the emergency, or they went to detox, or they went to jail. Almost automatically, one individual is touched by two of these services. And, you know, I'm still not, this isn't heart attack urgent for me specifically, but just looks like we got double counting going on in there.
So actually, Lee, could we go back to the slide that has the five different people? Because it both reinforces your point and also shows what a burden or a challenge for both that person and the system it is. Because if you look at that, like the one on the left column, you'll see how many days they were in detox, jail, how many contacts. So it both reinforces your point and then shows, at least for these individuals, and I know we're still kind of early on, how, how much that goes down. And the cost of commitment, is it like 50,000 a month or something crazy like that? So I know that's not, but.
13 to 18 hundred dollars a day.
Yeah, it's.
A day, yeah.
It's ridiculous. And so, you know, I guess tapping my inner Dwayne Merrick, you know, the costs that we were expending before with these folks using multiple services but not getting what they need, and then looking at the savings that we've already seen normally in a budgeting cycle, gosh, we'd have to wait, what, five, six years to start seeing savings? And we've actually been able to count it. So I think, Commissioner Lenzmer, your, your point and your questions are really important. And I've been actually asking a number of these because it's hard to articulate to others without having that same data. And because of how many times folks, we're not necessarily getting their needs met, but being in each of these systems, it actually is kind of amazing the change that's happened, which means everybody can start working on other, other kinds of needs that we need them to do.
All right, that's helpful.
Also, I see a couple of questions in the chat box that will get answered in the next slide or two. If we can move to slide eight. So what we're requesting, the previous one, what we're ultimately requesting is approval to apply for, to CARES Act dollars that would fully fund two social work positions. And the total amount that we would request in our grant application would be approximately 457,000, 358 dollars. And then on the next slide, I just want to quickly show you the timeline. So this, as often happens with state and federal dollars, the turnaround time is rather quickly. So we would need to send our application in by August 12. We would be notified by the beginning of September there. And if approved for the funding, I would be back at the board asking for approval to accept the funds. So right now, we're asking just for approval to apply for the funds. We don't even know if we would get the funds, but we're asking for, we're asking the CARES Act fund to fully fund them.
So to clarify, that's two positions for two years because otherwise it looks like very well-paid social workers.
Correct.
Is there anything else in that that we should know about? What else is?
Other program costs that includes application fees, planning, housing licenses for the staffing system that we're required to use, mileage, training, technical items, laptop, a cell phone, all of those costs.
So how much is, how much is non-personnel costs? Ballpark?
Ballpark, 25 to 30% at least.
Okay.
15% is low for.
Okay.
Just the, the equipment, you know, purchasing that and then paying the monthly fees, that's quite high as well.
Okay.
We do usually have, and I think this question, we have interest in our own staff. Might be a little bit high in our ask because if we have a senior social worker who's interested and wants to lateral in, we need to be ready to be able to pay that salary through this grant and not be using 210 dollars for it. So I specifically asked our accountants to go a little bit high. And then if we don't spend it all out, or we can use more for application fees, that would be fine. But salaries are not something that we can set they're done by contract. So I just wanted to be prepared to meet the need, whatever it might be.
Well, I, on the front end, this looks like talking about two positions during the presentation. It sounds like you're talking about more positions. And the reason I phrase it, it sounds like is because technology is not serving us well in this meeting today. And I think in our effort to do something better in that regard, we've gone backwards. But I'm going to assume that we're talking about two positions. And at this point, all that we would be trying to prove is an application for this funding and go from there. So I think it'd be appropriate this time to ask for a motion for approval. And to be a case where I better pay attention in the event, the evolution of the confusion.
Mr. Chair, I think that's lost.
Thank you, Chair. Is there a second? Second call for a second.
Second then.
Okay, any further discussion?
I would have some questions, but they probably were answered. My audio was not on, was not coming through. So would these two positions definitely be guaranteed to go away once this funding is done?
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Mergan. Mr. Chair, I am very strategic and tight with my budget. You can bet that I will be very litigious with this, as I always am.
And I don't know, maybe this has been answered before because I couldn't hear what was going on. But is there any possible way that these two positions could be absorbed into the people that we already have on staff? And then that would leave more, more of the money actually going to the cause?
Commissioner Mergan, Mr. Chair, we looked into that at this moment. And because of COVID, we're not feeling comfortable doing that because we are looking at an economic collapse. And with our current situation, we felt it was a little shaky that we, we would be better off asking for the fully funded positions. And if they don't work out, then we end, we do buy attrition, we reduce buy attrition later.
Why? Because of COVID? I mean, do we have the staff that could cover this?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Mergan, we do not at this moment in time. We're in the situation of reviewing all of our positions and we don't know what the new world is going to look like after COVID. So we know we're looking at for sure, after the waivers and the peacetime emergency ends, the amount of need in human services is going to be astronomical. So that's our concern.
Okay, thank you.
So then Melissa, if I have this right, so then if you get a lateral movement, then you'd hire, have to hire new positions for the movement, people who move.
Chair, Commissioner, that is correct. Although every, every time a position is vacated, I always expect a business reason and data to support the hiring of it, Dr. Williams. We look at every position. I'm extremely careful about those, about replacing positions so their head best be a need.
And then Melissa, when you fill out these grants, do you have to fill out the financial, like a statement? Okay, it'd be nice if you include that, you know, the next time.
Correct.
Thanks.
Oh, his presentation hasn't gone well due to no fault of the participants. But we do have a motion in a second to approve application. That being said, if the application is successful, does it come back to the board then?
Correct.
Till we get another crack at the apple. Okay.
There you sure do.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. District one?
Aye.
District two?
Aye.
District three?
Aye.
District four?
Aye.
District five?
Aye.
Well, that was easy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hope it goes better next time for all of us. Next item would be.
Mr. Chair, just before, before we move on, say those numbers we had were from January, could, could we just get some type of summer count as well? Just an idea, because I know we have a large, a tenth community, large people that are living in other spaces. Is that possible at all, at least to have an idea?
There is no point in, I would say in the summer. It's a nationwide thing. So it only happens in January. Why it's January, I don't understand. Anyway, Commissioner Pirskey, I believe the numbers are up. And the point of count is have available to us? You know, I mean, here's a double the amount. Also, I think this year, children did not get, they haven't been asked.
Hey, can you repeat that? You cut out about children?
Sorry. This last count probably is very low in the count of children because District 742 was not able to participate in the point in time count. There were some issues with data practices and counting children without their parents' consent. I didn't fully understand at all, but that's my understanding is that they were not counted. So the numbers are significantly lower than what are actually in our community. Does that help Commissioner Pirskey?
It, it does. But we've got a number of things, you know, happening that as far as getting an accurate count are troubling. You know, we also have a good number of people that are in hotel rooms. Also, as communities close camps, then people shift from one camp to another community as well. Or they find out that, you know, there's access to certain services at one camp and not at other camps. And so people migrate a bit. So just having a handle on the numbers, you know, could also just help meet the needs that are there.
Yeah, my understanding also is Commissioner Pirskey, that there are a number of people that are being funded in hotels by another organization. We are reaching out to those individuals because our focus is on permanent supportive housing. And we are trying to get them out of that temporary sheltering and into permanent supportive housing or on, you know, wherever they need to return to, whatever their situation might be. However, with two outreach workers, it's pretty difficult to get to all of those individuals. And some of those are families as well. And we are giving higher priority to families. So we're trying to serve those first. And then as we can get to individuals, we're trying to reach out to them as well.
I don't think there's a right way to do this. Every approach you can take to conduct that census has shortcomings. The best we can do, I think in this case, is estimates. And with the estimates, it would have value in this regard. If you do it more or less the same and you see a trend over time, then you got some information you can work with, even if you can't exactly. Anyway, one crisis at a time. Can we move on? Okay, thank you, Julie, for putting up with us. Mutually painful experience. I hope we have better luck next time. Emergency Management, Aaron, are you available?
Aaron Tufki.
All right.
Good morning, Commissioners. Aaron Tufki from Emergency Management. And with me this morning is Sarah Uch. We are here to provide an update on our CARES Act funding and then to seek your authorization to apply for both FEMA funding and an emergency management performance grant. If I can, I'm going to let Sarah start out with an update on where things are at with the programs we have in place already.
Good morning, Commissioner. Sarah Uch, Finance Director. As you may recall, to July 14 meeting, the County Board did accept and approve 19.3 million dollars of federal CARES Act money that was allocated to the county from the state of Minnesota through the feds to be spent on various items within Stearns County. Part of that was internal costs, but the, the board did approve a plan, spending plan, which Phase One was to include $5 million for small business relief. I wanted to give a quick update to the board about that small business relief program that the county, that the county has kicked off. We, we are encouraging all small businesses to apply through the county's website. Applications are to be accepted from August 3 through August 28. And we have been collaborating with the small cities and the HRA to administer this program to get it as widespread as possible. We have so far, since August 3, received 21 applications, six within the city of St. Cloud and 15 outside of the city of St. Cloud. So that program is kicking off and we're hoping to see that pick up in, in the upcoming years. Each business so far is eligible up to $7,500 of eligible expenses. And so we're, we're watching the needs of the community and hoping to be able to serve as many as possible in that regard. The, the item that was included in your blue packet for consideration is a subaward agreement between the Stearns County and the St. Cloud EDA, Economic Development Authority, to have them assist us in the administration of this small business relief program. them assist us in the administration of this small business relief program. So my request for that blue packet item is that the County Board authorize the signature of this subaward agreement, and then also authorize the county auditor and board chair to sign subsequent sub-agreements that we are looking to enter into with other cities that hope to administer the small business program in their community. So that's one action item. The other thing I wanted to quickly update the Board relating to this CARES Act funding is to let you know that we have sent emails out to the, the six cities that have a population under 200 that did not receive their own funding. We sent an email out asking them for any expenses they may have incurred to ensure that we can reimburse them for their eligible expenses. And we've also been in contact with the school districts within Stearns County to have them identify to us what their anticipated needs are in the upcoming school year, and where they may have a gap in funding that we can help them after we see how this small business program ends. So with that, I am open to any questions about the CARES Act or the small business relief program?
Any questions or, or more details or whatever you, since you might have?
Sarah, do you anticipate the funds for businesses to run out? Or, you know, will there be enough to go around or first come, first served? Do you have any idea?
Well, so far, it's been kind of a slow start with only 21 people applying. We had set an initial maximum per business at 7,500 because we really weren't sure what kind of, what kind of response we were going to get. So at this point, it looks like we're slow out of the starting gates, and we should be able to grant all those requests, but we did set some priority, priority items in case we do get to a point where we are running low on those, getting close to that $5 million max.
So Sarah, is the amount going to St. Cloud of 1.2 million?
Yes. So we had developed a communication with each of the cities within Stearns County and kind of talked to them about if they were willing to administer their own program. Stearns County would give them a percentage of the amount that they were willing to give to help them have more for their businesses. And if they wanted the county to administer, we kind of set a max on how much we would administer within their community to ensure that all communities were receiving an equal opportunity based on their population for, for assistance. So that amount for St. Cloud is 25% of their total CARES allocation that they received from the feds. So they received over $5 million. That amount within that subaward agreement is 25% of that total.
So then they'll do all the administration, approve the funds, and then they'll just send a report back to you guys at the county once done?
Right, yep. They're going to enter into similar agreements with most of the cities within, within Stearns County. Most of them wanted to administer their own program because they truly know their businesses best, so.
So Sarah, since we're talking about small, obviously could be very small businesses, and recognizing, you know, the, these flyers are going out in the mail and there's social media going on, are each of these communities also doing their own outreach? I know I had heard from, and I'm sure other members had as well, from a number of people from salons to, you know, small mom and pop restaurants to, actually, I wanted the minority-owned businesses, but they just wasn't really going to be able to be set up for them, or they could, it was burning some, or they couldn't just go through that kind of requirement. So are there any other kind of outreaches that the communities are doing to make sure that, that people really know about? Are there things we can do?
Yeah, I know that there's been mailings at, as you, as you mentioned, and we did email out all the cities and some of the chamber of conferences and did ask them to, to perform outreach, and asked each city to put it on their website as well, as in some of the newspapers. So I think we're trying to get outreach that way, but definitely looking for ways to get the word out there. So any suggestions would be helpful. And nonprofits, I should have maybe mentioned, nonprofits are also eligible for this. So when I say businesses, I mean to include nonprofits in that statement as well.
That was going to be my other question, so thank you.
They actually are, from, from a list that we purchased of all the businesses, we're actually sending out paper mailing as well, not just a email. And of course, as you suggest, we're encouraging the cities and EDAs and the chambers to get the word out as well. I, I think we're using every avenue that we have anyway, try to, try to get the word out.
Right, thank you.
So what's the appropriate action at this point?
For the component I was talking about, I was just looking to update the Board and then also just ask for authorization and signature on that subaward agreement with the EDA, and then requesting, rather than bringing every individual one back to the Board, perhaps authorize the County Board Chair and the County Auditor to sign similar agreements with the other cities within Stearns County.
Okay. So the appropriate action would be to approve this? All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
All right, thank you, Joe. Was there a second? Second by who?
Steve.
Thank you, Steve. All right, any other further discussion? Not, all those in favor say aye. District one?
Aye.
Two?
Aye.
Two?
Aye.
Three?
Aye.
Four? Five?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Steve, you might have more inputs on this than you think, lately. City of St. Cloud? Her dad is Harold Fiddler. You got an insight already.
Um...
Only unrelated.
Can I ask one question quick?
Yes.
Did you come up with, you mentioned the school districts briefly. Have, they have any other concerns?
Yeah, they, they each submitted quite a list of anticipated costs and needs in the upcoming school year, everything from PPE such as masks and thermometers to different distance learning items that they would like to purchase. And they do feel that they have quite a funding gap at this time. So I know that there's some, there's some funding opportunities that may be coming their way, but we def, they were definitely interested in collaborating with the county and, and getting some of our financial resources as we find. So as we meet as an internal committee coming up this next week, I do anticipate that Dr. Williams will likely be coming back to the Board with some information on the amount of funding that they're looking forward and asking the Board to consider that as part of our 19.3 million of spending.
Thank you.
If you remember, the, the general plan that, that the Board approved Phase Two was to take a look at what the school districts needs are, but, but they have been receiving funds, you know, other areas, so we want to make sure we don't duplicate any of them. But we'll bring that back.
All right, thanks. Sarah, for clarification, I, I've got Sartell Way Park in St. Joe in my district. Should they apply or look at the website from those communities or go to our website to apply?
Each of those communities is administering their own, but they are using the county's application. Therefore, they should have, they should be able to go to the county's website or the city's website and get to the same link.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. But the cities in those instances, the cities will be the ones reviewing the applications, awarding it, and sending out the funds.
I believe every city is using our application.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Sarah. Move on to the HRE item.
Aaron, well, I think Aaron has some additional funding sources relating to the COVID-19 that she wanted to talk about. I was just doing one of the, one of the funding sources.
Okay.
Morning, thanks, Sarah. So one brief update as well. If you remember earlier this spring, we did receive funding from the Minnesota Department of Health in the form of a response grant for $175,000. We did submit all of the reporting that was necessary for those funds at the end of July, so we have, have completed that obligation at this point. The two others that we're looking for action on today, first, the state of Minnesota Department of Public Safety has indicated that Stearns County is eligible for $18,000 from an emergency management performance grant. This is similar funding that we receive on an annual basis from the federal government that comes through the state. This will allow us to pay for staff time or any equipment or purchases that we have made in response to COVID. It does require a 50% match, which is available already in the emergency management budget. So we would be looking for authorization to apply for that emergency management performance grant. Do you want me to talk about the next one we're looking at, or do we want to discuss the approval of that one first?
What's the, what's the pleasure of the Board? Go ahead and, go ahead and do the second one then.
Okay, so the second one, we are also seeking authorization to begin the FEMA public assistance application process. This allows us to apply any and all costs that we have had thus far for our response to COVID from the county to FEMA for consideration of reimbursement. If, as you remember from past events, FEMA reimburses at 75% of cost. Typically, of that cost is made up by the state of Minnesota. However, because of the situation that we have with COVID, we have been informed that that 25% cost share would come from our CARES Act funding. So we would still be made whole again, but it will be a little different than what we typically have seen in the past. As of right now, we are looking at expenses that we incurred from February through the end of July for this first report to FEMA or this first project application. That would include about $1 million in personnel time and $75,000 in expenses for things that we have purchased to support our response, like personal protective equipment, thermometers, medical equipment, EOC support items, some different things that we were able to obtain throughout this process to aid in our response. So we're looking for the opportunity to begin that application process with FEMA to seek that reimbursement for our expenses. Those expenses that are not eligible to be reimbursed by FEMA, we would then applies to any CARES Act funding that is available.
Then Aaron, later, if we incur more costs, then you can submit another application.
Correct. We're, because of COVID and some unique circumstances, the federal government has allowed for us to apply on an ongoing basis. Typically speaking, we apply at one time, but because of this response being ongoing in nature, we are able to make several project, project applications. So we would envision that likely by the end of the year, we would do another application for this fall timeframe.
Thank you.
Okay. Any, any other questions, clarifications by Board members? Otherwise, I guess we would be looking for approval of both items that Sarah talked about and also Aaron. Anybody wish to make that motion?
Sarah's item you already approved, so just be Aaron's item.
Okay. Okay. Aaron's item, all right.
Sandra.
All right, we have a motion to approve that item. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All right. Motion been made and seconded. Any questions, any more details folks want? If not, all those in favor say aye. District one?
Aye.
District two?
Aye.
Three? Three.
Aye.
Four? Four, aye. Five?
Aye.
All right. All right. But this is, this is one of the tougher board meetings I've had. It's pleasure of getting my way through. The next item, I guess, would be the HRE item?
Mr. Chair, members of the Board, this is Neil Full, tiered executive director of the Stearns County HRA. Before you today, respectfully requesting the approval or the adoption of the resolution approving our 2021 levy request for $416,160 or 2.6% increase over the current year. With COVID-19, our services are needed more than ever. We've seen a substantial uptick in the request for recertifications of existing tenants who hold housing choice vouchers in Stearns County. And a lot of it is due to our tenants being terminated or laid off indefinitely from their jobs. So what happens is we have to go back and recertify their income and their assets, and then typically their rent is reduced to zero because they have zero income, and then we increase the amount of assistance provided to each one of those tenants located throughout Stearns County. Currently, we manage 224 vouchers or 1.3 million in housing choice vouchers for the county. We could actually go up to 274 vouchers if HUD would provide us with some additional funding, so we could actually assist another 50-some families if HUD would offer more housing choice voucher funding. To date, they have yet to do that. As I mentioned, with COVID-19, our, our services are needed more than ever. We anticipate the service, the demand for our services to continue to increase throughout the rest of this year. We don't know what's going to happen after the peacetime emergency is, is removed, or if the federal government implements a moratorium on evictions. We are seeing several housing choice voucher holders that have a job and pay a portion of their rent, having difficulty making payments to their landlords. So we, we continue to see this, not only for the rest of this year, but more than likely all of next year too, unless we see a substantial uptick in the economy and these individuals being rehired or finding new jobs. With that, I am open to any questions that you may have, Mr. Chair or members of the Board.
Neil, this is Jeff Mergen. I'm having some difficulty getting the arithmetic to work out here. Could you tell me, what is your current budget?
Our current budget is $408,000.
Okay, now, if you take 2.6% of that, that's over $10,000. At least, that's what I...
Can you just do the math here real quick? And I did the math incorrectly, and you are correct. So because the resolution is written as is, I'm not going to ask that we amend the resolution to the 418,608. We could leave the resolution at the 416,160.
And there was just an increase last year, and, and now is not the time to be putting another of the thousand cuts on our taxpayers, I think. I, I definitely cannot support this again, support this again. Sorry about that, but I can't.
With all due respect, Commissioner Mergen, the constituents of the, of Stearns County rely upon this funding in order to receive the housing choice vouchers. And if we look at the impact of this increase, we're looking at nine cents per person located in Stearns County, not including the city of St. Cloud. Yes, I understand the impact to our other constituents within that county, but these individuals are the individuals that rely upon this funding more so than anyone else. more so than anyone else in the county.
Any other questions, Neil?
Yeah, Neil, Steve here. Just wondering, do you have an idea of what types of jobs people have been permanently let go from, like industry?
Mostly retail and services such as hotels, restaurants, that's, those are the ones that are most heavily impacted. You know, your best, your people, your salespeople at Best Buy have, you know, we've seen a substantial reduction in employment there. All the restaurants throughout the county. You know, as Aaron and Sarah had mentioned, the HRA is assisting the county in this relief fund. And every day between myself and the deputy director, we're hearing from hair salons, barber shops, restaurants, childcare facilities. They're seeing a substantial reduction in the number of kids that they're servicing. Or they took on partners that they staff accordingly based upon the population difference. Most of the industry most.
Yeah, so what we've been doing, annual verification, I don't know if it's a voucher or a folder. And after doing interim, that's exactly for each time their income changes. So if their income was down, typically, I can be example, one particular parent, we reached her by four times in a period of twelve months. Because they had a job, lost a job, had another job, a different payment amount. So everything, so the kind of situation changes in their paths, we can do this. I do want to hear typically, okay, it's from two certifications, research. That's the, I'm talking about the G U B of four hundred sixteen thousand, fifteen. It's an increase of eight thousand.
That's just like it's levy, your total budget.
Oh yeah, okay. Our total budget is, we have, we want to free them in.
Any other questions for Neil? Any other questions, Neil? Okay, to clarify for my esteemed colleague, it looks like according to the agenda, we're being asked to take up three items at once here. Two resolutions and then a draft county resolution. Doing that all in one vote, is that acceptable to the rest of the board members? Would you care to opine on that particular matter? Somebody? Okay, Cheryl, I'll find that it makes sense to have one vote for all three resolutions. How about the rest of you? If you don't have an opinion, you want to pass the resolution? I must be having an electronic shortage here. Cheryl, would you like to make that motion? Do we have a second? Okay. A motion by Cheryl, a second by Joe. The relative to the valid objection that Jeffrey's earlier. That's really one of the challenges of this job is that when the economy goes tankers, when we have the greatest need. When the economy's not pretty good, we have less, and it just counterintuitive, and that's how it is. Okay, all those in favor say aye. District one? District two? Are you a board member? Are you still awake? District two? I hear you, and I can't, there's nobody on, okay, district. All right. District three? All right, district four? District five?
Captain, can you hear me?
Yes, certainly.
Hey, that was a tie, I don't know why.
Okay. Okay. All right, I can hear you. Uh, okay. Well. Yeah, got approval, it's quite a presentation.
Mr. Chair.
My environmental services. Talk about an hour.
Mr. Chair. Okay, so Jennifer Buckentene and I are here, and I do have an item, just a quick update on the census. After Jennifer.
All right.
The plat that's before you.
Okay.
And hopefully Jennifer, you're ready to go.
Good morning, commissioners.
Hi, Bucky, how you doing?
Good. All right, we'll see if this works. So the first item that we have for you is to consider our platform state window township, it's entitled Hannah or Estates, or I should say Hannah or Haven. This is a four lot platform residential lot they have in section twenty of state window township. The township approved the preliminary and final plat. And the complaining commission also recommended approval of the plat at their June meeting. The final plat is now been submitted, all the conditions have been met. The documents are executed, the four thousand dollar part-time dedication fee has been paid. So with that, we would recommend approving the final plat of Hannah or Haven.
All right. Do we have any questions by board members of this particular plat? Are there any questions, is there a motion to approve this?
I'll move to approve.
All right, and we have a second, I didn't get a second, is?
A second.
Okay.
All right. Any other, any other questions, if not, all those in favor say aye. District one?
Aye.
District two?
Aye.
District three?
Aye.
District four, aye. District five?
Aye.
All righty, is that something else, Shelly?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I just want to give you a quick update on the 2020 census. Minnesota leads in our response rate at seven two point five percent for the nation. The date for the census has changed, so we will need all information in by the end of September. Previously, it was the end of October, so they have made a change. Current response rate is at seventy-three percent. Couple of areas that have a low response rate by census track. One of those tracks is in the city of St. Cloud, which there are a lot of apartment buildings. And the city of St. Cloud in our complete count committee is making a concerted effort to get out to the communities as well as working with the property management group to try to make sure that everybody gets counted. We do have a low response rate in the Eden Lake Painesville area, we're not sure why, but it's around fifty-one percent. So based on the information of the population estimates that we have and the information that we've had from the previous census, so that's how they come up with those percentages. The census enumerators will be going out and starting to look at all of those people who have not responded. They hopefully will get that wrapped up relatively quick. So if there is anyone that has not responded, you can still do so. But please try to make sure when you chat with people or large groups that you ask that question if you responded to the census, because we really would like to make sure all of our citizens are counted. Anybody who resides in the county getting those numbers, it means a lot for us for the dollars and cents of it. So if you have any questions, I will definitely try to answer, but please remember the census will be ending a month earlier than we originally had anticipated due to COVID and some of the other issues and problems that we're having. I believe, I think nationally, they want to make a little more concerted effort here in September coming up.
Shelley, quick question?
Yes.
Are people still able to complete this online or do you call in? Do they have to wait for somebody to come to their door?
No, again, they can, but online, twentytwentycensus.gov, pretty simple. Address, you just go there and you click to accept response, and you will go in and type in some information. Even if you don't have your card anymore, don't worry about it, go in and put in your response. And that will be, would be super helpful for everybody. And we expect that if you get that information in, go to the enumerators and then they don't have to come to your home. So they are still checking those numbers and those addresses as, and so the more we can do online, the cheaper it will be for all of us.
Yeah, and it's pretty easy. I know my mom did it online, she lost her card and she was surprised how easy it was. So saying that because you don't have to be super technologically literate to do this.
Yeah, and I think it's really important to make sure everybody knows that even if you've lost your card, you can go to twentytwentycensus.gov and still put in your response.
Anything else?
No, Mr. Chair, that is all I had today, and no other questions.
Shelley, as far as getting to those apartments, is that an issue for the county? Is that issue for the city, or is that issue for the state as far as getting those workers and getting those people out?
Technically, it's an issue for the cities because most of them are in municipalities, but it's really not an issue. There are state statutes that allow that and federal, federal rules and laws that allow for entrance of census workers to take those counts. And we have been trying to work with those property management companies to let them know that that's what's going to be happening. We've sent out letters. Matt Glazman's done a fantastic job at the St. Cloud Complete Count Committee. We have worked with all of our neighboring cities to try to get them to be prepared and involved. So I think we're getting the word out, Stearns County is just behind the state response rate, so we are doing a pretty. So we got to keep up the good work.
Right, and we do have so many apartments that have gone up in the last ten years, we just want to make sure those folks are accounted for.
Correct.
Okay, anything else? All right, well, Jennifer, great presentation, very much. Moving right along, I guess there's nothing else under environmental services? Okay, I need an opinion from the board, you want to take a break or keep rolling?
Let's keep going, we're all.
Okay. You know, Cheryl has spoken, so we're going to keep.
And I have to admit, I did get some more coffee, so I don't know if anybody else needs more coffee, so.
Well, it'll take this long for Jeff Johnson to warm up, so go ahead, get some coffee. Okay, Chad, are you going to be covering this all by yourself?
Morning, Commissioner, can you hear me okay?
Oh, God, this is great.
Yes.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Nothing to do with you, everything to do with the technology maybe working.
Yeah, it's a, it's a challenge, working from home, remote stuff, but doing the best we can. Just briefly, again, my name is Chad Martini, I'm the land services manager, I work with Jeff Johnson, who's the property services division director. I have with me today Garrett Munson from Houston Engineering. Garrett is engineer that works with us on our drainage matters. And Cale Van Brugan from Rinky Noonan, who is our legal counsel related to drainage. And if I can share, hopefully share a PowerPoint today, I'll just roll right into the action, and certainly commissioners, if you have any questions, feel free to jump right in. So in a perfect world, you should see County Ditch Twenty-Eight PowerPoint, all right, thank you. So again, we're here to talk about engineers report. Real brief background, County Ditch Twenty-Eight, we've been looking at some of the issues of flooding on Two Rivers Lake and looking at conditions of the ditch. We've done a lot of work here today, we're here to present the engineers report that was done to look at are there issues with the ditch? And if repairs were done to the ditch, what are the actual impacts? So we could start to kind of weigh the cost of repairs versus the benefit of those repairs. My goal today is to get through the engineers report, present the relevant findings. It's easy to talk about numbers and their impact, but it's much more useful to actually see on a map what the impact of a repair might have to where water actually goes. I think that's one of the questions we've always struggled to answer. If we do something, what is the tangible result? And then really getting into options for you as commissioners representing the County Ditch Twenty-Eight Drainage Authority as to, you know, what do your next steps look like, you know? And Cale will go through that from legal perspective. You know, again, our goal here was to determine the condition of the ditch and then to kind of look at those mapping. There were three scenarios that Houston Engineering modeled. And we chose those conditions based on the premise that we're being guided that if there's issues with flooding on the lake, that you really want to look at your most localized repair opportunities, because the closer you are to the problem with the repair, the ideas, the more benefit you'll gain. So we looked at current conditions, where does the water go today if it rains? If the fish barrier that is on the lake outlet were removed? And then the third scenario was if we remove the fish barrier and also do a full repair from the lake outlet to the culverts in Holdingford where the ditch ends. These scenarios are based on a two-year rain event. These scenarios are based on a two-year rain event, a 10-year rain event, and a 100-year rain event. And a lot of this will make more sense once we see some of the mapping. Garrett, are you on the line?
I am, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Garrett. Do you want to take the Commissioners through the high points of your, the Engineers Report that you worked on for us?
Definitely, I can do that. If you want to back up one slide real quick, I'll cover some of the broader points of the report as well, for digging into the numbers. So when we did this review, this, prepared this conditions report, you recall, we recently did the reestablishing the record of this drainage system, defining that legal profile cross-section, right away, all of that of this drainage system that informs these maintenance decisions, knowing the full scope of what it is that the Drainage Authority is executing their jurisdiction over. So what we did is we reviewed the survey information that was gathered as part of that to look at the condition of the drainage system in terms of accumulated sediment. We also reviewed drone flight footage provided by the county and identified numerous trees down either directly adjacent or crossing or within the flow area of the ditch and creek. And then also just looking at the photos of the condition of the outlet, and all of that helped inform our report. So there's more than just, just a little modeling, those other parts, and then we'll get to that for the recommendation. Like Chad explained, there's three scenarios we modeled based on those readily available kind of low-hanging fruit of the typical options of completing repairs and what does something interim require, you remove an alleyway. And what we did in our modeling was we expanded the scope of an existing model that you had to include the storage of the lake, so that we could really account for when it rains and you get that balance, right, when you get those peak water elevations. In no way is this, you know, a FEMA scale flood map. But what it does is it helps give numbers that are, you know, a representative quantity. They might not be exacting due to the resolution of the model, but they can help inform the general impact of these various actions taken. And the two, 10, and 100-year rain events, if you're unfamiliar, those are what we call return periods. So a two-year event is something you expect every two years. That doesn't mean it can only happen every two years. It just means it has a 50% chance of happening this year. Likewise, a 10-year event has a 10% chance of happening this year. And a 100-year event has a 1% chance of happening this year. You'll recall that we've had some very wet years. Also, we have seen multiple 10, 50, 75, 100-year events within the last few years. So that can be part of what's driving the exacerbation of these flooding events. But the other reason that these are important numbers is two-year, often design criteria for a drainage system. 10-year, often design criteria for stormwater conveyance in a city or township road, things like that. 100-year, often what we're talking about, damage to structures, you know, those are FEMA flood claims. So those are why we evaluated those events, just to give you some context. So now we can go to the next slide.
And we're on packet page 59, where, and this is page three in the actual report, but page 59 in your Board Agenda Packet.
So when we looked at the results of the model of taking these different actions, we laid it out in this little table for you, so that we could see what's that approximate peak flood elevation for each of these events. We're all looking at, you know, the standard or industry standard of a 24-hour duration event, meaning that the whole hydograph, the rainfall happens within the 24-hour period. And we're comparing to the existing condition, what happens if we do each of these steps? So if we remove that barrier, what that does is because it's often flood and because it causes a constriction at the outlet, you know, it's harder for water to go through a channel that has a break on it than it is to go through a clear channel. What that does is it helps restore some of the storage within the lake itself prior to the event, and it reduces the hydraulic resistance or speeds the water's exit from the lake during the event and following it. So we do see a reduction in, in these peak water surface elevations on the lake. And it's most noticed for the two-year event, which isn't surprising, because that's the kind of event that wouldn't overwhelm the storage of the lake or the channel itself. So that's where downstream, there is capacity to convey that flow, that's not overwhelmed. Basically, you're not forcing a fire hydrant through a straw, right? And as you increase in the quantity of events, you get to that 10-year and 100-year, the relative impact of each of these events is reduced, because now you're using up more of the storage, your downstream conveyance is becoming, you know, more full and overwhelmed. And that's not inherently an unexpected thing, that's just how hydraulics work. But that's what's driving the difference we're seeing in numbers. So when you're looking at this table here, you can see that for the two-year event, simply removing that fish barrier, we anticipate that providing about a half a foot of relief in peak stormwater elevation from a two-year rainfall. You do a full repair downstream, restoring that channel to its legal capacity, it's as designed and subsequently improved condition, and we're looking at eight tenths of a foot. So, you know, close to nine, 10 inches is what we're talking about here. And then for the 10-year event, looking at about a third of a foot or, you know, three inches, four inches for the barrier removal and closer to the half a foot for the full repair, recognizing that the full repair includes the barrier removal in these conditions. And then in the 100-year, looking at one to two tenths of a foot or two to three inches and a quarter of a foot, so three inches for the full repair. So when looking at those numbers, the larger the rain event, the less impactful the results are in terms of change in depth. But that does not mean that the changes are inconsequential. And we'll be able to see that when we look at some of the mapping, where, you know, a quarter of a foot, three inches, can make the difference in some instances or may make the difference in whether or not a structure is impacted on an individual's property. So those are interesting things to take a look at. So we'll move into that as we look at some of the mapping. So the next slide here, we're going to talk about our recommendations in the report. So this is from the conditions report that we prepared as the engineer. Our recommendations are that that fish barrier removed as soon as practical, because not only does it realize the most available reduction during peak flows, but it is also an unpermitted obstruction of the public drainage system, which as a drainage authority, you have the purview to go ahead and order the removal of that. And Cale can provide a little more context on how that could be effectuated. But that is definitely the low-hanging fruit that you for sure have authority to tackle right now. I mean, you have authority for all these options, but it seems like the easy path forward, so we strongly recommend that. We further recommend that a full repair report be completed. You know, this inspection conditions report is helpful in providing information and guiding decision-making moving forward. But if you want to do a cost-benefit analysis and look at some of the more rigorous environmental considerations and regulatory hurdles to overcome in terms of permitting or permission of PNR or the OR or anything like that, that is, be something that's undertaken in the fullness of a repair report. Then we just wanted to throw out that there, there is the recommendation that any repairs downstream be undertaken as a single event. There are opportunities to phase portions of repairs through, you know, regular maintenance activities, but the economy of scale that's realized when you do a holistic repair of a large reach of a drainage system can be very significant in terms of cutting out all those mobilization costs and things like that. If you're going to, if you're going to do it, it often behooves the dollar to get it all done at once. And then in observing the existing benefits on the system and the relative costs that we're looking at for, you know, preparing the repair report, completing any repairs, things like that, we're starting to incur some larger costs on the drainage system that's formed by the current role, which is outdated. Just in terms of dollars, the data is escaping my memory right now when the last redetermination of benefits was completed. Let's see if I can find that quickly.
1906.
1906, so $19.06 and $20.20 are very different. I'm not a juror, so I can't tell you how different they are or what, how they might change. But we recommend that the Board consider completing a redetermination of benefits to ensure that they're being fiscally adjusted into the attribution of costs for any future activities. So those are our recommendations from the report. Now I'm going to turn it back to Chad to discuss some of the modeling, so you can see how this maps out. And as always, I entertain any questions you may have.
Any questions for Garrett before I jump into some of our mapping?
Jump.
All right. So our GIS group led by Mike Poehler put together, they took the data from Houston Engineering and they made an interactive map. And I put the web address on there, and we'll post this on the Internet too, to give property owners an opportunity to play around a little bit for the sake of time. I'm just choosing a couple, I'm choosing one area, and we'll just run through briefly what, what these impacts, these potential repairs are. So if we get a two-year rain event, this is where water goes according to the model. Please note this, what on my screen is a yellow line, but it represents where the lake shore might normally be, just to give you a frame of reference as we move forward. Now, if we, if we potentially remove the fish trap, now we see water starting to retreat, so we see a lighter color now representing where water goes. So all the darker shade that we see, in theory, goes away if we take out the fish barrier. Now, going to the next step in a two-year rain event, we take out, we do a full repair. So now the fish barrier is gone, we do a full repair, and this crosshatch now represents where water goes. So per those numbers now, we kind of start to see, based on that, the biggest bang for your buck clearly is taking out, you're realizing the most advantage by taking out the fish trap and then doing the full repair. It's basically two-thirds versus one-third from a full repair. And, you know, we can kind of see along the shoreline there, the crosshatch and that light blue are very close together, you know, so you can kind of get a feeling now for what you get for that repair by taking out that fish trap. If we move to a 10-year rain event, you know, as Garrett mentioned, more water just makes your fixes less effective. So again, we see that line representing where the shoreline might typically be. We're getting a lot of water now, it's coming in pretty far. You take out the fish barrier, again, that lighter color now represents where water goes with the fish barrier removed. Moving in the right direction, but still pretty far from where the lake normally is. We do a fish barrier removal and a repair of the ditch. And again, that crosshatch represents where the water then goes if you do those repairs. Certainly reducing where water goes, but also making it pretty tough in a 10-year rain event. You know, your dock's probably still going to be affected. Move into 100-year rain event, there's just a lot of water everywhere. And if we get 100-year rain event, it, it gets tougher for even removing that fish barrier. Water's certainly retreating, but on the global scale, not terribly much. And then we do a full repair with that crosshatch. Again, water's moving in the right direction, but now you start to visually get a sense of what those numbers mean of if you're, if you're thinking about the cost of action versus the benefit you get from that action. You know, now we can visually see that. And, and I think that's an important scenario, and I want to make sure I share this both with the public and especially those property owners, so that they can go out and they can kind of look at their own property and kind of get a feel for, you know, what these different events might mean.
Chad, if I may?
I'm sorry, questions?
I just wanted to chime in real quick if I could.
Please.
I just wanted to throw out the disclaimer that, you know, this, this mapping and the modeling is at the mercy of our best available information and assert that this is not a FEMA-level study, nor do we have the detailed field survey to confirm that all these structures are in fact, you know, inundated or impacted. There may be some small onsite mounding or things like that that are protecting structures. So this can be jarring to see, you know, homes on a map entirely covered in water. I'm not saying that's not the case. I'm merely stating that I can't confidently state that that 100% is the case. But that greater level of detail of site survey and quantifying the impacts is something that could be part of a further repair report if directed by the Commissioners.
Yeah, good, good points, Garrett. I mean, it generally gives you the trend of, you know, what we believe would happen, but certainly not a level of detail. Commissioners, any other questions about the mapping or the report before? I really want Cale to get into, you know, really probably what is, is most important for you, and that is, what's next?
What's next?
What's next? So really, working with Cale from Rinkie Noonan, we talked about three options. And Cale, are you on the line?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
I can hear you just fine. Well, let's jump into it, Cale. Let's start with kind of where we're, where we've been and kind of where we currently are, and I'll let you kind of walk us through here.
Okay, so an inspection report has been completed. We've been in front of the Board getting authorization for that previously, and that's what was just presented to you. So you've just heard the results of that inspection report. That report is important because it tells us, is there something that needs to be repaired? And if so, what might that cost? And depending on what that might cost, that either allows us to go forward and order the repair right now or for the Drainage Code tells us, no, you need to go through some more formal proceedings like ordering an engineering report, having a public hearing on the engineering report before you order the shovels on the ground to actually get the work done. And as you can predict, because you heard HEI's recommendation that a repair report be formally ordered, the cost of repairing this system to the as-construted and subsequently improved level exceeds those thresholds that prevent us from just ordering it done without having a public hearing from all the people that are going to pay for it. So that's where we are now. If this was farm country, the Drainage Authority would probably say today, yep, let's proceed, let's not waste any more time or money. Let's order that Engineers Report, and then let's go forward, because they know that the result is likely going to be high landowner demand to have the repair completed and to pay for that. This ditch system, what we learned from the inspection report is a little different. What HEI is telling me when I read their inspection report is this County Ditch 28 was probably never designed to fully provide flood protection through the 100-year rainfall event for all the landowners along the lake and in the watershed of the system. And so repairing it to that level might not provide the benefit that people are really demanding and, and wanting and in need of right now. And it comes at a significant cost. We're not talking about very cheap numbers here. So if you look at Chad's chart in front of you, the question is, does County Ditch 28 need maintenance or repair? We know that, yes, it does. We know that there are repairs that are needed. If the answer to that was no, then this would all be done and we can move on. But we're at the we are here, and you have three options. I'm going to start with number two. You can order Houston Engineering today to proceed with that repair report, but there's a cost to that. So that leads us back to number one, which isn't required by the Drainage Code. But here's option one explained. It basically gives you as a Board the opportunity to say, should we take some input from the people who are going to pay for these additional procedures that are required before we can repair? To give them a preliminary look at, you know, at the end of the day, if we spend the money on the Engineers Report, if we order the repair done, here's what we anticipate the impact to be, is it worth these costs to you? And, and before you make a decision, you might say, let's have some landowner input. And if the landowners say, well, in the best-case scenario, after spending over $200,000 to get this process complete, we don't think that gives us much. They might tell you, thanks for the information, we, we see it, we understand it. You know, this isn't worth the money of the next step. worth the money of the next step. We don't know for sure what they'll say. And so option one is, do you want either in front of the full board or to delegate to your staff to do a landowner informational meeting? If you decide to go that route, right now, based on the current benefits role, there's a real small group of landowners that pay for this work. We know that ultimately, if you were to proceed with a repair, that our recommendation to you would be that you should do that concurrent with a redetermination of benefits, so that all the people currently using the ditch system as an outlet and benefiting from the system pay. And so we would, at that landowner informational meeting, provide some gratuitous notice to people who are not currently on the benefits role, but are in the watershed, knowing that at the end of the day, if the feedback is, you have to proceed, you know, despite these costs, that, that those people are going to pay and we want their input to be part of it. So that's option one, and I believe that might be the recommendation of your staff.
Yeah, I, I think Kale, you know, just having met with county leadership, I, it's my sense that, you know, taking feedback from the people affected is never a bad route to go. But of course, I always defer to the county board. I just wanted to quickly illustrate what this redetermination looks like. So I have a graphic here, and the green blob or the dark blob around Two Rivers Lake shows the current benefit, 3,000 acres, about 230 property owners. The, what on my screen is an orange line that is much broader, is what Houston Engineering would call the CD 28 watershed. So inside that kind of jagged line, that thick orange line, there's really, everything inside of that is sending water to the ditch. And so when, when Kale's talking about, you know, kind of expanding our, our property owner feedback, these potentially are the people that would help pay for this. So a redetermination could jump from 3,000 acres of the current benefit to 43,000 acres of ditch benefit. You go from 230 property owners to about 3,000 property owners. Now, the benefit of that is, if a farmer's tiling 80 acres of land in Crane Township, he's creating an expressway for water to get to the ditch, he now is helping pay for maintenance of the ditch. You know, you create a more fair and equitable spread of costs. If we look at, we took out trees, a lot of trees around the Trestle Bridge in Holding Ford two weeks ago, that's a $3,800 project. We needed vendor help to drag those trees out, they were gigantic. You know, you spread that cost over 3,000 properties, you know, it's a couple bucks theoretically a person, you know, the, the spread of those costs look much different among 230 property owners. So I just wanted to give a graphic illustration of what redetermination could look like, why that's good. You know, I understand the downside, if you're not in a, essentially a taxing district now, you know, you probably don't want to be included in one. But, you know, again, if you're using a utility and you're not paying for it and others are, it, it, it creates a situation where if we move forward with some of these, redetermination costs $200,000. A repair to the ditch could cost another $200,000, just based on rough numbers that Houston Engineering is helping me with. You know, you're going to want to spread those costs, I think, out over a redetermined benefit versus these 230 property owners. So any questions on that before I turn it back to Kale?
Yes, Chad, as far as the benefit existing now, is it the people on the ditch that actually are attached to the ditch and attached to the lake? Or are any of the members excluded on the lake because they're not considered part of the ditch?
Yeah, there are, there are holes. I don't have a, this map probably doesn't show it, but, you know, you can see some pockets of Swiss cheese in here where, you know, there are property owners on the lake who have flooding issues that aren't in the current ditch benefit, which means they're, they don't pay anything to maintain the ditch. And it wasn't their choice, it was set up in 1906. I mean, you know, nobody fought to get out or anything. It's just kind of, gets into what Garrett was talking about of, when you establish something in 1906, then you fast, fast forward, you know, 100 and some years, you get a very different landscape, both in dollars and also, you know, who's benefiting and who's not, you know, have also changed over those years. So I think, you know, the point you're making is, no, not everybody on the lake is paying into the ditch system currently.
Okay. Chad, this is Jeff Mergen. I'm generally not in favor of the enormous costs that are attached to redetermination of benefits. But I think one thing here, before we do any significant amount of spending of money any further, that we, as I understand it, people can petition to get into the benefited acres. I would think that all of those people that are right on the lake, first thing that should be done is they should all petition to get into and be included in the benefited acres and therefore share in those costs.
Yeah, two points Commissioner, and I, I want Kale to chime in on kind of how that petition system works, but I probably didn't do anything to address, if a redetermination were to occur, or if a repair were to occur, the county board or the Drainage Authority can defer those costs. So for example, it might take three years to get through the redetermined process. And it, let's say the final bill is $200,000 for redetermination. You know, you, you would have the option to defer charging those costs out to the current benefit, so that the new benefit would pay for that. Which I still don't think, it's an important piece, but I don't think it addresses your point. You make a good point about, you know, people who want or need action to occur, but maybe aren't part of that system that pays for it. Kale, can you briefly talk about kind of what that, what that petition to be included in looks like?
Yeah, first of all, that, that would require the voluntary petition of all the landowners. We can't force anyone to petition in. And then the standard, you have to have a hearing for every one of those petitions. We could consolidate that into one hearing, but the standard is, are there evidence in the record that the system has capacity to serve as an outlet for those properties? And, and I think that might be a hard standard to meet here. You know, the, the board obviously can evaluate the evidence however it wants. But my biggest concern probably with relying on a series of 401 petitions rather than a redetermination, is that it opens it up to an potential appeal for every one of those petitions, which in itself could get costly. And there still have to be, whether it's by one viewer or appointing three, a determination of what the benefits are going to be for those properties that come in. So in terms of cost savings, you know, I, I don't know that it, that for property it's a cost savings, it might just potentially be a cost savings if, if the goal is to not do a full-blown redetermination for the whole watershed.
Yeah, Commissioner Mergen, I, I, I hear what you're saying. I, I understand exactly what your point here is. We've run into this on some other ditches too, where clearly people who are actually damaging their neighbors with water and they're not part of the system. And, you know, we do our best to try to sweet talk them to come in, but it's, it's like so many things, unfortunately, there is a fix, but the fix isn't. Sometimes it's more painful than...
But if the landowner, if the landowner petitions to get in, maybe I'm not, I'm, I'm missing something here. If they petition to get in, why would there be any appeal?
Well, any, anyone who, the, the granting of a petition gives them essentially unfettered rights to outlet their property and make further drainage improvements. So someone who's on the system already who feels that the system is overtaxed and can't handle any additional water, might have an interest in preventing that person from having that additional legal right.
Yeah, I think in practicality in this case, I would think neighbors would want it in, but with Kale, you know, Kale makes a good point. You know, I think here too, Kale, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think when you get into redetermination, a lot of the appeals probably come into, people just don't agree with what their slice of the pie is.
There would probably be more appeals. Wouldn't there be more appeals with a redetermination than there would be with a voluntary inclusion?
Essentially, it's, it's hard to pick. I think that this scenario is not uncommon, and the most common appeal you see in this scenario is people who haven't ever paid on the ditch system, just now not wanting to pay to be part of the system. I think that's, that's a reality, and so might step up and try to avoid having to become part of the benefited area. The same question, I think, you know, to the point of all this having to be voluntary petitions, you might meet some resistance in landowners saying, well, my land is already running that way, why should I petition to pay? I don't know. But to the extent they're willing to petition, you know, we, we just can't force them, I guess is the point I'm trying to make.
The only ones that I'm talking about petitioning to get in would be the ones that are directly right on the lake, obviously have lake shore property.
Yeah.
And I would think before we do anything, those people should all be in the system. And, and I would, wouldn't see why they would not petition to get into the system. I don't see why there would be any appeals of just those people.
This is Commissioner Notch. In my opinion, it's going to be, if there's going to be a price tag, some of them are not going to pay. They're not going to pay. It's just that simple.
You know, generally speaking, Commissioner Mergen and Notch, thank you for your points. And we'll, we'll get through a couple more options. And I think really, when we get to kind of the, the meat and the potatoes here of, you know, what our next step actually will be, you know, I think we can get into some of that. I, I, you know, I will say, having talked with members of the Lake Association in the past, generally speaking, I think they're in favor of a redetermination. I don't think they're opposed to being part of the system. You know, I think at this point, it's just a matter of how, what is the path in which that, that occurs? I mean, there's a couple different ways here, and I certainly understand where Commissioner Mergen's coming from, that, you know, this has been a project that's been going on, certainly in the 10 years I've been working with drainage. And, you know, there has been a lot of staff hours, there has been a lot of costs associated with, you know, looking at the lake. And, you know, when you talk about fair and equity, you know, this is the type of debate you get into. Kale, do you want to take us to...
I have one more.
Oh, yes, please.
You know, if we do a redetermination of benefits, isn't there some people that are going to be excessively burdened with things like $30,000 payouts and that type of thing?
Certainly, certainly in their opinion.
I, I, Jeff Johnson helped me address that question a little bit by bringing up, I don't know, not a master with sharing my screen. Well, I can repeat Jeff's numbers. You know, Jeff Johnson, being an appraiser, working in appraising for over 30 years, you know, knows some stuff. And...
I hope so.
Well, you're giving me way too much credit.
Well...
Yes.
Well, I set myself up pretty good there, yeah. Anyway, to make the point...
There's help, Jeff.
When we look at a $200,000 redetermination, and that is our best estimate at this point of what we think the cost might be, could be less, could be more. But when we look at that, and if we spread that cost over 3,000 properties in a redetermination scenario, looking at, you know, the larger map, you know, Jeff does the math and it comes out to about, if you own 10 acres, it's about 46 bucks for that $200,000. Now, of course, we know ditch viewing doesn't equitably, not everybody pays the same percent. You know, the closer you are to the ditch, probably the more you're going to pay, or the more you outlet, the more you might pay. So somebody might pay $15 for their 10 acres, and somebody else might pay $150 per 10 acres. But when we do look at $200,000, $46 per 10 acres isn't a terrible value. I can't promise you without going through the process, if there isn't a property out there that's going to get a giant assessment. I can tell you right now that there's a property owner in the current benefit that pays a pretty dramatically high percentage of all costs incurred by the system right now. But again, the cost we're looking at to repair from Lake Outlet to Holding Ford, we're guesstimating at this point, 200 to 250,000. And those are really rough numbers. I mean, I, I don't want anybody to get too set on those because without a repair report, we just don't know. But, you know, hypothetically, $500,000 to redetermine and repair the ditch, you spread that over 3,000 properties, we're certainly not in, I don't think, the $30,000 per property price tag. But, yeah, I mean, those, those are the realities that, you know, you look at when you do a redetermination, that it really comes down to how much are you paying and how many people help pay for it? Any other thoughts, comments, before I, I turn it back over to Kale?
So, so Chad, right now, I mean, the most immediate thing is you'd like to get the carp trap removed, the board can kind of think about this other stuff, correct?
Yeah, correct. I mean, I'm jumping forward a little bit. But yeah, I mean, essentially, getting the carp trap out is a priority from a staff perspective, because there's a legal liability for the Drainage Authority, knowing there's an obstruction. I've had brief conversations with some of the folks that work with the Sportsman Club, that is, babysits the fish trap. And, you know, they, they really have concerns about their walleye population, controlling their rough fish. Problem with the fish trap is, regardless of what you as a Drainage Authority may do or not do with that obstruction, reality is, the DNR has already told me, they're not going to issue a permit for that fish trap next year. So whether it comes out now, whether it comes out later, the wheels have probably already churned on whether or not the fish trap's going to come out. I think that is. And I think that's a positive, because if the pressure is, hey, Sterns County Drainage Authority, you know, you got to do something about this flooding, we want to increase flow, it's your cheapest and best option to do that.
Yes.
You know, as, as far as repair redetermination, what we as staff were talking about, and I'll kind of jump, let Kale talk about option two. But basically, option one was, hey, direct staff to go out and kind of, what's the word on the street? Let's educate people on what we're talking about, what some of the costs are, what this all means, you know, get into some of that mapping. This is the benefit. If you live really far away, you know, you're, you're, you're damaging someone else by sending your water downstream, that's why, you know, you pay. And then we come back and we kind of make a decision. Do we want to move forward with a repair report? Do we want to stop? Kale, you can probably talk a little bit too about what filling out the drainage record means, the Drainage Authority too, depending on, you know, what does it mean legally for them if they move forward or if they stop?
Sure. The, the, the concern is, if, if you just stop all work today, knowing that a repair is needed, without that landowner input, then, then basically your record is, we've just decided not to do anything because of cost. And that creates a potential liability issue to someone who's claiming the ditch system not being repaired is damaging them. You're much more protected from a liability standpoint, if you ultimately don't do the repair, having taken landowner input about the cost of the repair versus the benefit that the repair provides, and the landowner willingness and support or opposition to going forward with that. And that's why we're pushing for, before spending money on an engineer's repair report, which would require you to have a public hearing and then make a decision, thumbs up or thumbs down, a repair, potentially saving those costs if the landowner input is, based on what we know today, this isn't leading to a pass that, is worth the money. That's, that's the difference between option one and option two, our preference being for option one. And then the final option being, you have the authority you need right now to order that fish barrier removed. You can do it as a maintenance project, an isolated maintenance project, and charge the cost to the drainage system. Or you can follow the obstruction procedures in the Drainage Code and send a notice to the landowner and the Lake Association, directing them to remove it by a certain date, and stating that if it's not removed by a certain date, then the Drainage Authority will remove it and assess the landowner or the Lake Association. Association for those costs.
Just to point a clarification.
That notice has to give them an opportunity to appear in front of the board if they contest that that fish barrier is obstruction.
Uh, Kale, I just want to jump in real quick. Um, I don't believe it's the Lake Association. I believe it's a sportsman's club that is responsible for it in terms of an entity. Um, if I've misunderstood, I apologize.
Okay. Um, anything else? The, uh, it it really comes down to, uh, what you want to get done today. Want to take some action and, uh, select option one? Uh, we certainly want property owner feedback and sense the, uh, obstruction, the fish trap has to be removed anyway. Uh, those two things can be done without incurring significant costs. But the bad news is, is no matter what you do, uh, people are gonna complain and complain mightily. It's just that depending upon which choices you subsequently make, uh, the only difference is which group of people you pick a fight with. These are never, uh, easy, clean, uh, decisions to make. Uh, my predecessor on the county board, oh dang, near 40 years ago, got me involved in ditch viewing. And, uh, uh, it's surefire controversy. Uh, but that's life, you know? You do this job, uh, you know, all you can do is the right thing, and you're gonna take some crap for it. So, you know, uh, think of it as while it might not be the Lenten season, you're getting a jump on your pennants.
Mr. Chair, I I move the two staff recommendations.
Okay. Well, you'd be taking the heat. That's pretty brave.
Well, you know, the fish barrier, you know, you can't have it both ways. You know, if you're gonna complain, you got it, and there's an option, get rid of something, you gotta get, it's gotta go. The other thing is, um, those people that live on the lake that aren't benefit of property owners, uh, should be, and I think
We gotta pick them up.
You know, so it's just a better updated way to go to get everybody in.
If we've got a second on that, uh, you consider the input of the person that made the motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second it. I think getting the feedback is gonna be important as we move forward, and appreciate Steve's comments.
Any other, any other discussion?
And that that fish trap, that fish trap is going to be, have to come out next year anyway, Chad, according by, by the DNR?
Yeah, apparently, as I understand it, and maybe Kale has additional input, but if the DNR doesn't, apparently, they annually issue a permit for the fish trap and the carp taking. I think it's for carp. DNR calls it rough fish. And DNR has already said, we, they weren't gonna do it this year, but because of COVID, they didn't really have staff to deal with it. Um, so what the mechanical process of, I think the DNR just says, you don't have a permit, get your trap out. Um, you know, because there was discussion internally, it's like, well, should we wait for the DNR to do it? But from a staff perspective, I think because of what the data shows of how dramatic of an impact, we're talking about the max peak reduction we can get being 10 inches, six and a half of it's the fish trap. You know, that's two thirds of the problem right there. Um, you know, tha- that's why we're motivated to get it out. Because I think, you know, in terms of advocating for the people with the problem, seems to be, as Kale and Garrett called it, some pretty low hanging fruit.
Okay.
Chad, as far as the the cost of removal of the fish trap, uh, if we remove it, uh, well, then, uh, the people that are on the ditch would be paying for it. However, if it's to be removed or ordered to be removed, um, who would be paying for it then?
Yeah, you're on the right track here, Commissioner Persky. I'm glad this came up, because Kale and I talked about this at length. So there's two options when you order this removal. You can, a- as a drainage authority, as I understand from Kale, and I'll let him speak for it, but you can just say, you know what, sportsman's club, we don't know who owns it, we're just ordering this obstruction removed, and the system's gonna pay for it. We think in the long run, that's a cheaper option. Or, as Kale already mentioned, you would notice the property owner, who I don't believe has anything really to do with the fish trap, other than it's on his property technically, um, but it's our understanding that it's the sportsman's club that really has ownership or stewardship of this. And, uh, you know, you you could order them, say, take it out by this date. Um, however that occurs, you know, I don't know how they would go about getting it out. Um, or if they don't, then the county, it becomes a county project, we take it out, and then we send a bill to the sportsman's club. The million dollar question is, what happens if they don't pay? Are you gonna sue them? Or is it just cheaper to have it become a system cost? It's not right, but, you know, it's hard to sue somebody that doesn't have money. And I don't know if they do or don't. But Kale, am I in the ballpark on describing this?
Correct. And I think a good, uh, middle ground resolution here would be to attempt to collect it from the sportsman's club. And if we can't, before filing any kind of lien against the landowner, uh, bringing that back to the board and saying, do you want to file this as a lien or use drainage system funds to cover the cost?
Yeah. I mean, it it becomes murky as to what, what's right and what's wrong? What do you want to accomplish? What do you not want to accomplish? Um, you know, as I've learned working in drainage, um, fairness is sometimes difficult to find.
It's in the eye of the beholder, actually. Uh, well, um, if you, we don't want this report to run into the time allotted for the second coming of Christ. Do we have a motion on this?
I I think I made it.
Oh, that's right. Sorry. I made it. And and we had a second.
Mr. Chair, this is Kale. I just want, uh, one final piece of feedback for Chad's benefit. This option one landowner feedback, what are the wishes of the board? Do you want that to be a notice meeting that takes place in front of the full board? Or do you want your staff and your consultants to conduct that, um, informally without the board and then report back on the comments provided?
I think we'd get more, just my opinion, I think we'd get more honest feedback if, uh, we did it without the board.
I appreciate that, Mr. Chair. We have a pretty robust plan.
Okay. Uh, so what do you, what do the rest of you think?
Yep, I'm okay. I'm fine with that.
All right. Well, great. All right. Uh, I think we've got a motion and a second. Can we vote now? All those in favor say aye. District one?
Aye.
Two?
Aye.
Three?
Three.
Aye.
District four, aye. District five?
Aye.
All right. That's a good deal. Guys all set now?
I appreciate your time, Commissioners. I apologize for running late.
Uh, there's nothing you could do about it. Uh, uh, the technology evolved during the course of the meeting, and this was the best interface yet. So, uh,
Well, thank you for your patience.
Doesn't mean I want the meeting to go another hour, but, uh, this part was relatively painless. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, just want to say thank you to, I mean, some pretty significant work's been being done. So, thank you.
Oh, you should have been here when Chad started. He was hopeless. So, this is a, this is a dramatic improvement.
Thanks for training.
Oh, it was. This guy was so lost, and he's asking me questions about drainage.
You told me to. Goodbye.
See ya. All right. Uh, Regional Rail Authority.
Airport Authority.
Airport Authority. We don't want to be in the railroad business.
Well, we are, unfortunately. We will run the railroad authority in September, but we're not gonna worry about that now. Um, I don't think you need any background on this. The ad hoc committee is supposed to appoint at least one person, hopefully one person. Um, and because a couple of entities, including Sterns County, hadn't made appointments, have not made appointments at all yet, um, the meeting that was scheduled for yesterday has been postponed for two weeks. And so I think we can still follow the, uh, the process that the ad hoc committee was wanting us to do and make one appointment. And then, um, all the entities will meet with the representatives on the ad hoc committee and then come back at the next available meeting and ask the board to make its second appointment. As you know, we had many applicants, and, um, a little process ended up with the top four, which are indicated in your, in your packet. And so, um, it's just, uh, hopefully, hopefully the board can make at least, make make one appointment.
So, Mike, to clarify, we, the goal is to make one appointment today, have the ad hoc committee look at who's been appointed, and then come back in case any parameters have been changed. And at least, my understanding, just to reinforce, um, because we've got people with different experiences, they're particularly looking for people who have business relationships.
Aviation.
Right. Well, and but, right? So, I mean, I, yeah. So I just wanted to check about that. Thank you.
Yep. You nailed it. All right. Uh, so Dr. Willie's looking at least one. We could make two. Uh, somebody make a motion?
So, just, I, I'm sorry, I should make a motion, but I just just to have said this out loud, because we just got so many really great people. Um, one is that one of our finalists, the city is, the city of St. Cloud's gonna do, so it would seem like we should take them out of it. And then, um, two of the people have some similar experience, and the third one has some business experience. I'm fine, personally fine with, um, going with, um, one of those two, as long as our other person, uh, would end up having more of the business relationships later on. Um, and I believe that means that, I'll just throw it out here, if people want to do something else, uh, that we would nominate, that we would appoint Marshall Graham's.
All right. Should we do this one at a time? If we do this one at a time, we can consider, uh, Cheryl's, uh, uh, discussion as a motion. Got a problem with that?
Should we be doing interviews of these people?
And I'm fine with that, too. I just know that we've kind of pushed this back some. And if we were gonna go with the business side of this, I would probably be nominating a different person of these. So if you guys want to do interviews on, personally, I always think that's a good thing.
Um, I think we've got enough information to make a decision. I mean, you know, what are you gonna ask them that you don't know about?
I have, I have a real fear here, again, of, uh, the two rural communities being left out. Um, I I really, I I'm not opposed to Marshall Graham at all, with St. Cloud. And the St. Cloud area already has, for sure, two, two representatives. And now, St. Cloud, that whole metro area is gonna have at least one more, which is fine. But I would, at some point, like to see the two rural, somebody that would, that would at least represent in the two rural areas a little bit, maybe coordinate, willing to coordinate with the St. Cloud Airport, along with all the other airports that exist in the three counties, and maybe try and get something that between them, that include everybody and, and would benefit all of them, as far as their financials. Um, because as it looks here now, that the rural areas, which includes some other airports, are gonna be paying for one that is not even in the county at their expense. Because that money is coming out of their area and going somewhere else. I I really, really strongly feel that it looks to me like the rural areas that, once again, are gonna be left out of the mix here.
So, Jeff, I think it's important that we just remember, this is actually about the St. Cloud Airport. It's not about the others. I share some, personally, I share some of your concerns. We have another finalist, too, is from your district, who has significant, I think, business connections. And I certainly have no problem in doing that. Um, remember, the city of St. Cloud has committed to continuing to fund at the current level, and the region has been benefiting, although the St. Cloud taxpayers are the ones who have been paying, whether we live in Sherburne County or not. Kind of make a point of one of the other people that's on here. I mean, if we take Ryan out of it, there's one person who has significant business connections.
How about this, folks? Let's at least get one appointment done today. And if you want to, uh, do something else, we can do that down the line. Dr. Willie, would that work?
Yes, it will.
Well, I'll second Cheryl's point.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. All right. Uh,
Now, to get in on the discussion, uh, we got a second now. Uh, I would be supportive putting one on. And Lee, I I would assume then you're going to be staying on as the other member or being part of that other member until we make the second appointment? Is that correct?
Commissioner, first, uh, this board is not meeting yet. This board is not meeting at all.
It's just the ad hoc group.
The ad hoc committee is meeting.
Okay.
It won't meet until it's, it's, well, all the appointments are made.
I mean, I'd be, I'd be willing to attend those meetings, Joe. Uh, even though it probably brings down the electric, I mean, the intellectual average across the board, uh, I could sit in or take notes, so I'll forget stuff for sure.
And then at some point, at some point, we do get to, uh, to suggest an at-large member, too.
And, uh, Jeff, there's nothing, there's nothing to stop you. You make this point repeatedly, and I'm a little disappointed. You don't take action on it. Another deal where opinions aren't enough? What are you doing? Well, recruit somebody out there. You know what we're looking for? Looking for a business background, aviation related. You want a small airport. Just get out there and talk to folk. You don't have a team, so you got spare time.
I, uh, I think that, uh, there are two, two very qualified candidates that are out from the rural areas right now, that have been recruited out there.
For the second position, uh, let's vote on the first position, so we can get this, uh, uh, thing going. Uh, with that, I'll, I'll for a vote. All those in favor say aye. District one?
Aye.
Two?
Aye.
Three?
Aye.
Four?
Aye. Five?
Aye.
Yeah, that was easy. Um, item by Commissioner. District one?
Just reminding people, today's primary day. The polls are open. Wear a mask and social distance. But if you haven't voted, make sure you go vote.
District two?
Um, I concur with that. Randy, any particular issues relating to the election today that people should know about?
Randy crapped out on us, I think.
I'll take that as a no then.
Yeah. Well, that's a good start. District three?
I have nothing.
Uh, I don't have anything. Uh, Steve, what do you think?
Well, Lee, just for you, don't forget the donut dash on Saturday from 9:11 in Prepar.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. What time does that start?
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock. All right. That's drive up though, right?
Yeah, it's drive up. Bring, bring your grandkids or kids along, and they get school supplies.
I, um, yeah. The only, the only thing I missed about that, Steve, is, uh, the schmoozing opportunity, because there's, uh, folks that I see at that thing that probably only see every once in a while.
There you go.
Thanks for the reminder, Steve.
All right.
Okay. I think, uh, I think the horse is dead. So, uh, meeting is adjourned.
Thanks. Bye, all.
Oh, God, this is awful. Oh, God, this is awful. How much did they pay for it?
Oh, the long one.
Well, by historic standards, uh, this would have been considered a short one.
I've heard that. Thanks for that.
So, uh, it all depends on your frame of reference. But with the current board, you're right.
No, you know what? It was long with the ditch. The ditch top.
Oh!
That was long.
And, yeah, well, you know, if, if grandpa had a shoot together, he could tell you back in the day, same damn thing.
I've heard that, yeah.
Yeah, uh, the, uh, ditches are...
Kelly, has you muted? I can hear you talking, um, through on the web, on the web. I can hear you, I can hear you talking through on the webcast. I don't know why.
It's this one.
Just hang on, I'll let you know.
Somebody in control, man?
Well, I can't see if there's anything else that's signing.
Yeah.
Hey, Lee, can I get your autograph?
Huh?
Can I get your autograph on a plane?
Yes, yes, yes. All right, what do you need me for?
I think so did it.
Yeah.
It's not, I'll try it again tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah, I'll do that.
I will.
You can answer if you can get his take on, on council.
Oh, boy.
We'll get to that.
Yeah, you know, because I've been doing accent tea, so he's been asking me. And I think, who's Jeff Gerger? Is that his?
Huh?
Is Jeff Gerger running?
Yeah.
Yeah. I guess he's retired. He only wants to confront me, but he only wants to be around here, and he asked my dad to meet with me.
Oh, yes, and that'd be an appointment.
Yeah, so I think that's what they're planning.
Now, with the deal, yeah, with the deal is that, is, uh, the, like, county does, uh, the board, if it, if it's more, if it's more than half a term, the board...
Test, test.
...